Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, August 14, 2017. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 10, 2017, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 10, 2017, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 10, 2017, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, ma'am. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Present.
Mr. Cordilicchio has been excused. Mr. Mertens has been excused. Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente's been excused. Mr. Turk has been excused. And Mr. Bloom has been excused. Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We all stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Troply, would you swear into professionals, please?
The record should reflect that Mr. Howard, Mr. Mallon, and Mr. Soffte have been sworn to leave.
Thank you. Approval of minutes, regular meeting, June 26, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, O'Donnell, Posh, Turk, Bloom, San Clemente. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Armata. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Regular meeting, July 10, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, Cordilicchio, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Bloom, and Nansen.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Armata. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Regular meeting, July 24, 2017. Eligible voters: Armata, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, Bloom, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Correspondence?
Yes, I have a few pieces of correspondence. I have an email from R. William Potter. He is the attorney for HOPE, that's Howell for Open Preservation of the Environment. He has asked that this application be carried to September 11, 2017, without the need for any renotice. And they're good through that date.
Okay, is anyone here for case number BA-17-06, Howell for Open Land in Preservation of the Environment? Seeing no hands. This case will be carried to September?
11.
11, 2017, with no further notice. How's the extension of time on that?
They're fine. They're good till the end of September, or September 22nd, so we're okay.
Okay.
I also have an email from Gordon Gemma. He is the attorney for Mark Parisi, which was also on tonight's agenda. He has asked that that application be carried to August 28, without the need for any further notice, and they are good until August 31.
Okay. Do you think it'd be possible to get an extension of time anyway on that?
I'm not sure, but I'll try.
Okay.
I know he was anxious to come tonight, but since the board only had a quorum, he reluctantly agreed to move to the 28th, so.
Okay. Okay, is anyone in the audience for case number BA-17-05, Mark Parisi? Seeing, this case would be carried to August 28, 2017, with no further notice.
Okay, and one last piece of correspondence that I have. I emailed to all the members back the beginning of August, a memo that came out from Lieutenant or Patrolman Matthew Cherny. He is the traffic safety person for the police department, and he did a whole memo regarding the Kent Road bus stop for the Seminole development, which was a board of adjustment case back in 2004. I believe they were approved in 2006, and the development was built, but there's some question regarding the bus stop. Jack could probably bring it up better, but Tom Savino from my office has asked if we could please discuss it tonight to see if we can give administrative approval, and if so, can we please also have a motion and a vote by the board so we can put something in the record?
Okay, Mr. Mallon?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. All right. When that case went in initially, first the project came in, the Wawa was built, and there was property reserved behind it. After that, they came in with a subdivision and built homes. They had a cul-de-sac, and the requirement of the board first was that the access to the Wawa would come in off of that cul-de-sac that would go back to the homes. The board at that time was concerned about schoolchildren and bus stops, and they requested or required that a bus stop be placed out on Kent Road just prior to the cul-de-sac entrance, and of course, the entrance to the Wawa. There was no problem. We never, I don't think we ever got a police report at that time. Now that it's in, we have an extensive report from Patrolman Cherny who feels that it's a safety hazard with the bus stopping and people passing the bus. He requests that we do not install that. Purpose for tonight is to see if the board has any problem, if we give administrative approval, and according to what the police report, that that's not installed. That puts it very simple. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but...
Go down the line.
That would be it. Does anybody?
Do you remember that case, Mr. O'Donnell? That was the one behind the Kent first day?
I don't per se remember it when it was first heard, but I did read the police report and study it, you know, before tonight.
Right.
And do you want to hear my opinion?
Yes.
Sure.
No way can that be allowed. That's a hazard.
Right.
It should stop and not be allowed. It's just ridiculous the way it is, and I would never vote for approval for that.
So as far as you're concerned, you have no problem with giving administrative approval, that he doesn't have to install it?
Right. Mr. Posh?
Before my time, I did read the email that I received on the ground.
Okay. Mr. Armata?
Likewise, I was there for the votes on the Wawa.
Right.
Originally, they wanted 13 houses in the back, and we denied that, and they cut it down to 10 so that the cul-de-sac in the back was big enough for a turnaround.
Right.
So you can put a school bus back there and turn it around, which I prefer rather than even on the sidewalk.
Well, see, I have to agree with you, but how long has that been built out? What, five, six years now?
Yeah, I think what they've been trying to do is they're trying to clear it out.
Yeah.
And they can't get the applicant to build it.
Right.
So I think...
Well, the thing of it is, it's been in operation now for five or six years, and they haven't had an issue with the school bus?
Correct, exactly.
In five to six years, so, you know, I was against the bus stop to begin with. I remember that.
I was against it, too.
Yeah, there was only two of us that was against that, but, you know, I didn't agree with that having to be there. I always felt if they made that cul-de-sac bigger, like they did, the bus could go down, turn around, and come back out with no problems. So, no, I don't have an...
Okay.
Now, do we need a vote on that?
Mr. Chair, I just, before, in my opinion, you'll need a motion, just so that it backs up the sentiment of the board, but I have a question for Jack on the, second to last page, last paragraph. Jack, would you agree with the recommendation with respect to reallocation of funds to change the radius of the curb that he's talking about here?
Yes, yes, I do.
So you would respectfully request that if someone were to make a motion, that sentiment also be put in?
Yes, I agree, yes.
Now, what was that?
To change the radii.
Maybe Jack can address it better, but I noted in reading the memorandum that the officer was recommending a changing of the radius of the curb. He had noticed that there was some chipping, and evidently, the radius needs to be reconfigured in such a way to make the roadway larger in that area. I mean, Jack can...
Right, yeah, for turning radii, so when they turn to go in.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
Now, are they going to be able to do that, or no?
Yes, yes.
Is the developer willing to do that still?
Well, I don't think he has a choice. Right now, they're in the process of getting ready to go after his bonds to install the bus stop, so he either agrees with it, or they're going to go after the bonds and have the bonding company do whatever they have to do, and then we would work with the bonding company to have them change to put the radii in.
Okay. Might I say, that really needs to be spelled out, you know?
Well, that would be the administrative approval.
Okay.
That's how we would do it, as long as the board understands what it's going to be, and we basically follow what the police report says.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
To back up with the police report, I scaled on a map the distance from Route 9 to 25 foot behind. You have to stop 25 feet minimum behind a bus that's flashing lights, okay? So it's only, it'd be about 125 feet, and the police showed that the stopping distance, if you were to get on the brakes as soon as you could with reaction time, you'd be beyond that. So it doesn't even make any sense.
Okay.
So, if there's, you could do a motion, if somebody wanted to have a motion, or just authorize Jack to send a letter, but I think there should be an indication, maybe all opposed, all in favor, just so that, you know?
Well, we'll do a motion and a roll call.
Okay. Very good.
And now, this motion will be for Jack to handle it administratively. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for Jack to handle the administration to withdraw the bus stop, have the bus continue going down the street, down the end of the cul-de-sac, and follow the police report. I believe it was 100% correct.
Okay.
And the change in the radius.
Okay. Have a motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
I'll second it, and I totally agree with all your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Okay, resolution, or any more correspondence?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay. Resolutions, case number BA-17-07, William Ransom. Resolution granting a flex bulk variance for pool equipment. Eligible voters: Armata, Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Turk, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Applications before the board, case number BA-08-14. Excuse me if I mispronounce this, I did it during the testimony before. Henry Potavichani? Extension of time application. Application of Henry Potavichani as applicant, Ed Enger Potavichani as owner, seeking a two-year extension of time on their final major subdivision approval to subdivide two existing lots into four new lots. One for existing development to remain in three new single-family residence, residential building lots, roadway, stormwater, and other improvement on Orchard Road on premises known as Block 14, Lot 17, and Block 15, Lots 103, 304 Alexander Avenue. Expiration date, November 29, 2017.
Shall I swear to witness?
Yes, sir.
Swear the testimony you give this evening to be true, the whole truth, and not by the trust of God. Yes, you may have a seat, please, and place your name on the record.
Henry Potavichani.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
I'm asking this board to give us extension, because every time we get to finalizing this project, something comes up. Mike Geller's handling the project, and we just need a few, you know, it's not going to be two years, I know, but I just want to be on the same side. I think we'll be done within three months, hopefully.
Okay, now, what are you waiting for? What's going on?
We just received a letter from Jack Mallon, and he's requesting certain things, and we have to be in compliance. I mean, I let Mike Geller to handle all this stuff, you know? I'm building, and he knows what he's asking for.
Jack?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, he submitted for resolution compliance. He had a series of things on the file map that he had to do, and some corrections to the plans, so it's not like he has done nothing. He submitted it, he's waiting for his engineer to come back to complete it, but he's going to need outside approvals also, which is going to take him some time, once he gets the plans finished. That's why I think he asked for two years.
Okay. Do you feel it'd be done in that time?
Yes, I do.
Are you in communications with Mike?
Yeah, I've been talking to Mike, yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Mr. Posh? Do you feel this could be done, Jack? Be okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Now, this is a two-year extension of time?
Two-year extension, yes.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Armata. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Okay, case number BA-17-14, Pioneer Pipe Contractors, Inc., Temporary Use Permit. Application of Pioneer Pipe Contractors, Inc. as applicant, Mike Hammer as owner, seeking a temporary use permit to allow the applicant to store equipment, pipe, and associated fittings, clean field dirt, storage containers, and a portage on facility on site during the term of extension of the New Jersey American Water Transition Main Waterline Project on premises known as Block 37, Lot 31.02, 1321 Oak Glen Road. Expiration date, November 29, 2017. Welcome.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name's Ira Weiner. I'm an attorney with the law firm of BD Patavano, that's in Montville, New Jersey, and for those of you down here in this part of the state, that's the end of the Parkway North. So it was a nice ride down here this evening. I'm filling in for Mr. Bob Mintz, who filed the application. He couldn't be here, so he had, asked me to come in and handle this matter for him tonight.
Do you have any witnesses?
Yes, I have two witnesses. I have Keith Colagi, who is a representative of Pioneer Pipe, and I have our engineer, Todd Giddings.
Mr. Troply, you want to swear to witnesses, please?
Please stand, raise your right hand. Todd, good morning.
Swear the testimony you give this evening to be true, the whole truth, and nothing else that occurs after. And let's start with you in the foreground when we have your name.
Keith Colagi.
Say your last name, please.
K-O-L-O-G-Y.
What was the first name?
Keith.
Keith?
Sir? Todd Giddings? G-I-T-T-I-N-G-S. Very good, thank you.
And that was Todd?
Todd, yes.
There's a microphone in the middle of that table, so if you have a seat, it'll pick you up.
You want me to?
It's up to you. You can stand there, or you could have a seat.
I may do both, I'm used to standing, I may sit down, but...
That's totally up to you.
You can also pull it closer to you, that middle, just so you...
You can, what it is, that middle piece right in the table, that's your mic, yeah, there you go.
That's great, thank you.
If you need to use the board, here's a portable hand tool if you're going to destroy anything. Thank you.
Okay.
It's already on.
We have something of a somewhat unusual application. It's certainly within your ordinance, but it's not the usual business of the zoning board. This is a temporary use permit, and under your ordinance, we're required to come to the zoning board, who doesn't vote to approve or not approve, only votes to whether they're going to make a recommendation to the town council. If you've been through that, that's great. So as you're probably getting lean from the package, this is, we're seeking to use a tract of land as a storage yard for construction of the water line, the large water line that I'm sure you're all familiar with. And rather than waste any time with me talking, why don't I get into the testimony, and so you can ask your questions? I think that's probably the best use of our time, unless you have any initial questions now.
Okay, is Todd the engineer, or?
An engineer.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and qualify him for the record?
Sure. Todd, would you...
Have a seat. You can answer it through the table.
Would you give the board your place of employment, your professional credentials?
I'm employed by K2 Consulting Engineers, Inc. in Hennfield, New Jersey, and I am a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and I've appeared in front of zoning boards and planning boards in the state in a similar capacity in the past.
Okay, where'd you go to school?
Drexel University.
Okay. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm going to call Mr. Colagi first. We've had an opportunity to go through the reports of your professionals. We're going to try to address everything in there with, through the testimony, but if we miss stuff, I'm sure they'll pipe up and ask the questions so that we can cover all their concerns. Keith, who do you work for?
I work for Pioneer Pipe Contractors out of Sewell, New Jersey.
And in what capacity?
Project manager.
And you're the project manager for this project?
Yes.
Could you tell the board, in general terms, what, why we need this site, and what, how it fits into your overall construction project?
We're installing approximately four miles of a various 24-inch and 36-inch ductile iron water main, starting in Lakewood and ending up on Maxim Road in Howell. We're looking for a site to store some material and some construction equipment while we install the pipeline.
All right, this water pipe is going to service this community, am I correct?
It's a major transmission main, one of the larger projects for New Jersey American Water. It's a major feed, it's two phases. The third phase will eventually go under 195 into Farmingdale.
Now, are you doing that second phase, or?
We have phase one and two.
Okay.
Under contract, yes.
Are you going under 195, or no?
That's another phase, yeah.
Separate contract?
Could you give the board an idea of the overall operations, or what the, how you're actually going to use this piece of property?
On a day-to-day basis, it's, we'll come in, most of the pipe will be strung along the street, the guys will come in in the morning, once we start digging, and dump the dirt from the roadway, and get it out of the roadway so we can keep, you know, installing pipe, and then pick up the material, whether it's clean fill, required subdies, or final paving, and the trucks will come in the yard, get that, bring it back to the site, and start restoring the road at the end of the day.
What are you projecting for the hours of operation?
Our hours of construction are dictated by the permit, either with the county or Howell, so there's certain phases of the project that are night work, and there's certain phases that are day work, and that's all based upon where we are in the project and, you know, the permitting.
Yep, those permits are already issued, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
How about the number of employees? Give the board a little idea, how many people will be on site?
We'll have 10 to 15 employees, and the bulk of them will be driving company vehicles. There'll be a few personal cars parked there, but we'll have, we'll have an onsite inspector from the water company, onsite inspector from the county, and that's really about it.
Now, will they be inspecting the material coming in or going out, or?
Yes, we have an engineer that will be inspecting the soil, yeah. That's a whole separate part of our contract, but yeah, we're hiring them.
Okay.
Like, what about the truck traffic? You kind of mentioned trucks, are there any tractor-trailers or anything like that?
Tractor-trailers, we bring in in pipe, truckloads, we stage it along the route, we'll be bringing truckloads of dirt, you know, the excess dirt will be trucked off-site, the dirt that's needed, the stone that's needed, the subdies will all be stored in the yard.
The planning planner, one of the things she was interested in, she asked about refuse management. Is there any, anything?
There's some small pallets, some wrapping on some of the material, the valves that come in, but it's, there's really not a whole lot generated. You know, we'll have a 20 or 30-yard dumpster there for that type of debris, but it's minimal.
What about asphalt?
The asphalt, we mill it, we mill up the roadway, that is taken off-site, and then the asphalt will come in, depending on, you know, it could be from a, depends if we're a day or night, what plant we're pulling from, but...
Now, will the millings be stored on this site?
No, probably not.
Well, either yes or no.
The, for, in a short term during the day, and then when the trucks go home at night, they'll take them with them, so for a period of time.
So you will be storing, it will be stockpiled on site, then?
For, in some cases, yes. In some cases, they'll go right to the plant and come back with blacktop, so it does vary, but in some cases, it would be, yeah.
Is any protection of runoff for the millings?
I think, well, the engineer can address that in a few, sure.
Okay. What about machinery on this site? You going to have big loaders, crane, or excavator?
No, excavator, yeah. During the project, most of that will be usually out on site.
Right. But unloading the pipe and stuff, you'll either do that with the loader or excavator, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there going to be any fuel stored on this site?
No.
That'll all be trucked in, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
There were some other questions in the report, so I'm going to just kind of run through them, and you can give the board your answers. There was a question whether there would be any wheel stops or gravel surface proposed at the employee and construction vehicle parking area to delineate indicated spaces.
No.
Do you see that as any issue, you know, from a safety point of view, or is it just Do you see that as any issue, you know, from a safety point of view, or is it just normal construction site-type?
Normal, no temporary yard.
Jack? Okay.
It's a large enough area that we don't really need to designate. They don't give a lot of business.
Okay. There's also a question about restoration measures at the end of the project. You wanna just address that?
Topsoil will be dragged back into place, and the temporary trackout stone for the driveway entrance will be removed and hydroceded and returned as it was.
All right, also, there's a question about porta-john units. There'll be a couple of porta-johns. How's that?
One or two in the yard, and then one will be out on-site as we go, as we install pipeline for that crew.
And that's handled by an outside contractor?
Outside, yeah.
As normal in a construction?
Yeah.
What about site lighting? I know there was a question, I think, from Mr. Mallon, or from Mika about that. Are you gonna have, is it gonna be lighting?
When we're... During night operations, we'll have mobile light towers out with the construction crew, and also in the yard. So the dump trucks come in and getting material, injecting material, there'll be a mobile light station in the yard for those nights that we're working.
Do you have any idea, on a percentage basis, how much work will be done at night versus during the day? Give an estimate?
About a third.
All right, so at night, as I understand, is enough light so that you can safely perform the work?
Yes.
Just enough that you need in order to do what you need to do?
Yeah.
Now, as far as the trucks, the M-grass and E-grass on Oakland Road, they'll be coming off of 547, am I correct? That's gonna be the majority of your traffic? You know, the trucks coming in and out of this site?
I'm not following you exactly.
Whenever you're bringing the trucks in and out, are they gonna be coming in off of 547? You know, Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, coming in that direction?
Something could be coming out of Lakewood, some could be coming off of 195.
But they'll be coming out of Lakewood-Farmingdale Road, correct?
In order to access the site, is that... Will they access it from like... I think that's the question, Keith.
I think so, yes.
Okay. My question is, as far as traffic, trucks coming in and out of the site, have you thought about having somebody kinda watching the traffic in and out? Right there, 'cause certain times of the day, Oakland can be pretty busy. Especially at night.
No, no, we didn't... Didn't come up, you know. We talked, like I said, we talked to the police department, we talked to the town about, you know, the project, and there's no concern about our trucks leaving or entering the worksite. There didn't seem to be a concern about the trucks leaving or entering the yard. It's the same, you know, the same road, same time of day, so it didn't seem to be any concern.
Will you make sure that if you do have the light towers in on the site, that they're not blaring right out on the roadway? That they stay back in, 'cause I know sometimes those lights could be pretty bright.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Posh?
What's the duration of the operation?
It's all my thunder. It's about to get there.
The project's due to be online around Christmas time. The final restoration, the milling and paving will be done in the springtime, so...
If I could help clarify that, I know there were a couple of different time periods. We asked for a year to make sure that we had sufficient time, not only to finish the project, where most of the work there in the yard will be pretty much, won't be having great activity in the spring to get the restoration done. Some of that depends on weather, and we wanted to make sure that we wouldn't have to come back here again if we got six months and we ran over by a week, so we didn't wanna... Thought it made some sense. It's likely we will be done well before a year is up, but that was why we asked for the year, as opposed to a shorter period.
There'll be topsoil and seeding, and, you know, hydroseeding, the milling and paving of the road, which, you know, the required settlement, and that'll be done in the springtime.
To back up Wendell's question, just as a matter of getting more knowledge about it, how many truck trips in and out do you expect during the day, roughly?
Probably about 10.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sometimes you hear these projects, and you have this picture in your mind of a string of trucks down the road. It's a good question, though. It's a good question.
I have a couple of questions. As far as the hours go, what hours would the trucks be going in and out, up to? I mean, all night long?
I'm not sure what was permitted, but...
It says 7:00, 7:00 P.M. to 6:00 A.M. permit on the sec...
7:00 A.M.?
7:00 P.M., night work, 7:00 P.M. to 6:00 A.M.
So they'll be going in and out all night?
Yeah.
And what kind of noise will they generate, being loaded and unloaded? I mean, I'm looking at houses over here. How far are they away?
Well, the houses on the project we're installing the pipe were right in front of their houses, and we're working there, you know, during the night.
Well, I see one building across from the project, and then at the other end, there's some...
That's a barn.
A barn. And whose property is that?
Mike Hammer.
Oh, that's his property, and you already have a contract with him. This is just formality you're going through for approval.
The town requires it.
The only thing I'm concerned about is noise, and if, you know, can you tell me, are these trucks gonna be disturbing people at night?
Sure. I think, you know, but we have a permit with the county and the town to work at night, so...
Jack, that sounds okay?
Yeah, if the town... The only thing I recommend to you, so that... I would advise you to approach the town council and get a waiver on the noise ordinance, because there's a time at, I think, 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock.
11 o'clock.
And this is very common. A lot of the... When you do DOT projects, they always approach the towns to get a waiver for the noise ordinance, 'cause they're working at night, but I would recommend...
I'm sure the town did due diligence, you know, in approving the project.
That was my concern, what he's addressing.
Well, no, they wouldn't address that. I would definitely address that.
And you can do that when you go for it.
Is it reasonable to think they would make us work at night and not expect any noise?
Well, see, your contract's with the American Water, not the township, not the municipality.
But the town gave us permission, and they're telling us, or the county, they're telling us they have to work at night in these areas, so, you know...
All I'm telling is, if somebody calls and you don't have a waiver for the noise ordinance, the cops are gonna write you a ticket. So I would advise you to approach...
Do it now.
...your temporary permit, that you also get a dispensation from the noise ordinance when you're working.
I would suggest you do what he says.
Assuming the board makes a positive recommendation, we're hoping this is gonna be on the agenda tomorrow night. That was what I was given to believe, and I think that that would be an appropriate time when they're doing this, to ask them... Bring this up, and we'll raise the concern the board had.
Right.
Make that clear to them, and ask them for a waiver, that's why we don't have a problem with it.
I raise that issue because I've seen it in other municipalities.
Yes.
And Mr. Cooney's going to be paying the price.
Just being a contractor, I would also advise my dump trucks not to slap their gates whenever they dump, 'cause that's pretty annoying at night. I live in a part of town that we have 24-hour dump trucks, and trust me, it gets annoying at night whenever they're dumping their loads.
What do you use at night? Use strobe lights, or you just leave the beepers? Use the beepers, or do you use strobe lights?
Both.
Both? Okay.
Yeah, the backup arms?
So you're gonna have to have the backup alone, okay.
Well, they have to have that. That's...
The other thing, before you go in, I would recommend also, when you ask for a year, your property owner only gave you six months, Mr. Hammer, so that's what the letter has.
Both.
So I would, if you apply, I would think that you ask for the one year pending the approval of the property owner, but the information we got submitted, Mr. Hammer only gave you six months, so you're aware of that.
And we did that because the project's due to be finished.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, when they do it, I think when we write our letter, we're gonna say, if the board looks favorable upon one year, that's, of course, subject to the property owner's concurrence.
Okay.
That's fair. Mr. Collogi, are there a couple other questions that... Do you propose any signage here?
No.
All right, and there was a, I think, in Mr. Mallon's report... Maybe not. Maybe it was in the planning report. There was a question about, was it Mr. Mallon's report? Dust, noise, pollution... Well, we talked about noise, but about dust, is there gonna be any issues with that? Or do you take steps to control that?
Yeah, we have water truck and sweeper trucks on-site all the time.
All right, so he keeps the dust down, so it doesn't go?
Excuse me. When you moved the truck from the working site to here, do you put the tarp over the top? I've had my windshield broken twice by trucks carrying gravel and whatnot.
Yeah, we'll have... That's required, and we require truckers to do it, and the police that are on-site, and they can write a ticket for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think I have anything more from Mr. Collogi.
The only question, as far as the site sign, just ask Mr. Posh. I'm gonna ask Mr. Mallon's opinion. Do you think they ought to have a construction entrance sign on both sides of that?
Well...
For liability purposes, is what I'm looking at.
I mean, they could. Most of the trucks are not gonna be... First of all, they don't get that many deliveries.
No.
Most of the trucks are gonna be out in the road, right? I mean, they're only gonna be running... I mean...
They'll be in the work zone.
Right, they're gonna be in the work zone. They're not gonna be... They're gonna come to the yard if they're gonna dump excess...
It's not like a mining operation.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to cover all the bases, if you don't...
Most of them will be locked in our work zone.
Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
Would this site be security fenced, and a security gate would be proposed on this site?
We were gonna put fencing up.
Okay.
Well, I think you're required to have silt fence, but are you gonna put a chain-link fence or a temporary fence?
Just to prevent any kids from climbing on the equipment and, you know, flying through the site, yeah.
And would there be like a security gate and stuff? Because you might need fire department access and things like that, a Knox box.
There'd be a Knox box.
Something like that. Just in case of emergency, if they have to get in.
I don't think we decided on putting a gate up. I don't think that was... But we could, if that's...
What's your opinion, Mika?
I mean, if it's a gated facility, I just think in case of fire or any emergency access, the fire department would need to access the property, and that's why they...
What about not even having the gate, just have it fenced, but... 'Cause there's usually gonna be somebody on the site, correct? Most of the time?
As long... Yeah, it's either or. Either a Knox box, or if somebody is at the facility, manning the facility 24/7.
Right, the plan says optional.
No, I know.
So I think the way you do it, if they're gonna put the security fence, they're gonna need a Knox box, so the fire department can get in. If you don't have a security gate, then it's not needed.
Okay, once there are any other questions, I would call Mr. Giddings to go over some of the engineering-type questions.
Okay.
Todd, would you give the board, just go over the site and explain exactly what it is from an engineering point of view? What's we're proposing?
Just to, I guess, orient everybody to the plan, north is to plan right on the screen, south would be to the left, obviously. East is to the bottom of the page, which is Oakland Road, and the west is to the top of the page. So your property is basically bound by Oakland Road to the east, and the Conrail right-of-way or railroad tracks to the west. To the south is similar agricultural farm area. You're looking at a piece that we show there. The property is about 1.4 acres. We're proposing to disturb maybe nine and a half, over nine and a half, 9.65 acres of that area. We will be going in and discussing the site with Freehold Soil Conservation to see what their take on it is, 'cause it's somewhat of a unique situation, temporary, so we wanna just go in and meet with them, see what they want us to do. Obviously, we'll have silt fence, whatever other controls they require. If there's inlet, obviously, we put inlet control or sediment control in the inlet boxes. We have a construction entrance. From a stormwater perspective, the site slopes from east to west, so from bottom of the page, or from the front of the site to the back of the site, from the bottom of the page to the top of the page. Again, when we talk to Conservation District, we'll see if they want us to implement any sediment traps or such once we get in with them to see what exactly they want. There'll be topsoil stockpiles. We'll protect those with silt fence as needed. We'll discuss the millings pile with them, see how they wanna handle that, even if it's a temporary basis, daily, what kind of protections they require. And from a quick overview, that's kinda where we are, engineering. It's really just soil conservation for us. And whatever limited stormwater management, or, you know, erosion and control methods they want us to employ.
Now, as far as the topsoil, you're gonna strip the topsoil, then you're gonna replace... How many inches approximately topsoil?
That I don't know. I don't think we've done any testing yet. We will be out on-site doing some more findings, a little bit of survey work to see exactly what's going on out there for level. We could probably have, when we're out there, do some tests to see how much topsoil is actually there. I would suspect there's, well, I'm not sure as far as topsoil, but there'll probably be a lot of organic material there to strip, being its previous use, but I don't have an answer on what's actually there now.
Okay. And whenever you come back to reseed that, just using a pasture mix, or...
That will be the mix specified by the Conservation District. They usually have, you know, their required mixes for temporary or permanent. Or I guess if it's gonna go towards agricultural, however that would work out.
Well, see, that's what my next question was, was is this being farmed as we speak, or hay field, or...
Currently, I think it's previously farmed. I don't think it's farmed at this time.
Okay.
It just looks like it's overgrown right now.
I also see on your sheet, I guess it's 101, the drawing here, up in the top left-hand corner, you have a catch basin detail. Is there any catch basins on the site?
On-site itself, no. That would be for anything we haven't seen on the roadways that may track. Usually, well, anything in north, depending on the way the drainage is, if it's on the roadway, we'll still usually cover them just for anything that blows or is tracked, even, you know, beyond what's normally called on-site. We will typically put those in.
Is there any ditches coming in off of Oakland Road? Is there a ditch there that you're gonna have to get in on there, or is this an existing driveway?
I don't think there's any curb cuts or any driveways there now.
Okay.
It's just... I mean, as far as from what I can see, it's...
It's flat.
It is, yeah. There's nothing. It's overgrown at this point. I don't see anything that's, yeah, any specific driveway.
Whenever you put your driveway, is that gonna impede any drainage?
I don't believe so, 'cause the slope from the site is basically front to back, so from the roadway towards the back of the site. So I don't think you'll get much east or, I mean, I guess in this case, north or south on the road.
So, Mr. McDonald?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Posh?
In your pipeline process, are you gonna take everything that comes out of the trench, throw it in a truck and bring it here? Or is some of it get thrown next to the trench?
A lot of it stays right on the roadway.
So you have like a calculation, what needs to come out and stay out, and the rest is gonna...
Yeah, the county has a certain requirement of subdies they want replaced, and so that virgin soil has gotta get trucked offsite.
So you are gonna be running here with your night operation, like 50%, whatever, 75% of your dirt is gonna stay next to the hole, the rest is gonna go and come here?
Yeah.
Are you gonna put anything, and if you strip this thing, are you putting anything over, or are you just gonna run on the fill that's there and hope for the best?
If it's hope for the best, but if there's, we'll put some...
So you're gonna put something, you got a tracking pad, and maybe some pork installs, but the rest of it, you're just gonna run on the fill that's there, and if it drains properly, count on it holding up?
Yeah.
You can't use the stuff you mill somewhere along the way as backfill, or...
Some road goods we can, yeah, and we just mill it and leave it right on-site. They want a state blend on the county road, so we have to give them, you know, certified tickets for that.
Is there any stabilized sand requirement? Are you doing any stable...
Your town's very lucky, beautiful soil. There's no issue with that.
Mr. Armada? You're good? Jack?
No, I think we've covered most of them.
Most of the items, but the only thing, the yard won't be lit at night unless you're working?
Right, yeah.
That's correct? Okay.
We'll be home sleeping like everybody else.
Okay, then will there be, you're gonna have a construction trailer on-site, or no?
It's not really... Well, it's a storage container that's a steel box that has a small office.
Okay, okay, that's okay.
It's down in our...
But there's no utilities gonna be set up for a field office, right?
No, no, not at all.
No, I have nothing further.
Mika?
I have nothing further for this witness.
Matt?
Mr. Chairman, I think that unless the board has other questions, we're also...
No, I'm gonna open the public if you don't have any further. Can I have a motion to open the public?
Motion to open the public?
Second. Seconded by Mr. Armada. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anyone in the public would like to make a comment or ask questions? See ye none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. McDonald, seconded by Mr. Armada. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, before you...
Yes.
I just wanna make note, we did send a draft resolution to the council, 'cause they have everything ahead of time, but anything that's commented here tonight will have to be amended in the morning, which I will do. And I would suggest, if you're gonna get something from Mr. Hammer, if you can get it to me tomorrow, 'cause I'm sure the council would like to see that, okay? 'Cause it did say, I think it was from June to December, so just in case, it might be beneficial to have that on the record, okay? so just in case, it might be beneficial to have that on the record, okay?
And that, that meeting's six-thirty tomorrow, am I, that's what it said on the town website.
They may start at six-thirty executive, I'm not sure, I don't go to the council meetings, I'm sorry.
I'll call, I'll call the town clerk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? Now, this, this is for the use, temporary use permit?
I, I don't see any problem with this, uh, you know, I would make a motion to grant the use, uh, and abide by all the conditions and agreements that we set forward, and go and by what Jack said, to apply for a year, and then also the noise, which would be on tomorrow night's agenda. So, motion to approve.
It's, um, just so that we're correct with the legal underpinning of, of it, and, Mr. O'Donnell, you're correct, it's a recommendation to the council to approve the temporary use permit, with, I would think, the conditions that have been brought up tonight, the concerns. So, so the vote, and again, would be to recommend to the council the granting of a temporary use permit.
Do you amend your motion to include what Mr. Tropoli just?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion. I think almost everything, uh, that bears, uh, oversight was covered quite well.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Armada?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Good luck.
Okay, is there any other business before the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Um, I believe it'll be in executive session, in recent executive session, if we'll be able to, Chair, please?
I was gonna ask you that, thank you.
Will we adjourn back there, or right now?
I believe you can read the notice, and it'll, it'll include briefing, uh, when we're finished.
Okay, so we'll- Yeah. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Executive Session Resolution, whereas Title X, Chapter Four, Section Thirteen of the New Jersey Revised Statutes requires that the public shall not be excluded from any meetings of a public body unless a resolution authorizing such exclusion is adopted at a public meeting, and whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Howell has determined that such a closed meeting is required to discuss certain matters which are exempted from consideration with the public in attendance under New Jersey Revised Statutes Ten Colon Four Dash Twelve, namely litigation. Now therefore be it resolved by the Zoning Board of Adjustment of the Township of Howell that the public shall